You'll start the report.
The, uh, recording has started, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Called to order the, uh, regular, uh, council meeting for Tuesday, March 6th at seven oh five. Roll call, please.
Mayor Bennett?
Here.
Councilor Harris?
Here.
Councilor Stratus?
Present.
Councilor Druck? She is needed and I'm asking her to...
She was here today, yes.
I have a screamer. I'm here.
Councilor Druck is here, uh, Councilor...
I'm here.
Alright, we hear you.
Gotcha.
Gotcha.
Councilor Myers?
I'm here.
Okay. We have a form and stamp of the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, civil with liberty and justice for all. Okay, anybody see any need for changes to the, uh, agenda? Not seeing or hearing any? Uh, next up is the consent agenda. On, who are you? Okay, for the approval of the minutes of the city council regular meeting, February 16th, 2021, approval of minutes of the city council work session, March 2nd, 2021, financial report and the check register. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
A second?
A second.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor of consent agenda for the council meetings for February 16th, March 2nd, financial reports, January, and check register for February, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Not hearing any? Public comments, Mr. Public?
Uh, none of this.
Other public? Okay. We'll get back to them later. Next up is the city administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayors. Uh, Mr. Mayor, City Councilors, good evening. A brief summary of activities since my last report at your last regular meeting. I authored a request for proposals to start the process of hiring an architect for the library renovation project that RFP is in your agenda packet tonight. Uh, the planning commission held a meeting which I attended. Uh, they held both a special meeting and a work session. At the special meeting, they approved a modification of conditions of use and approved a condition of use for a subdivision project. Uh, both of those items are on tonight's agenda. Uh, at the work session, the planning commission, looked in detail at the code update project. That code update project, uh, previously had a virtual open house and this was the first time that the planning commission looked at this in the till. Uh, they looked at the actual text, uh, that is being proposed to be updated, asked some good questions. And the next step is for the project management team, including the Lane Council of Government planners, myself and the Transportation and Growth Management Office of the Department of Transportation, to fine tune that language. And then we have additional citizen meetings and then a joint planning commission and city council meeting attentively scheduled, uh, for the summer, uh, before final approval. The BlackBerry Jam Committee held a meeting. Uh, they approved a motion to cancel the festival and then they met again on March 4th where they discussed alternative events that the community could hold. And they have another, uh, they're going to get back on their regular meeting schedule and meet again in April, uh, to fine tune this and to decide on some dates and actual events that we're going to be holding. And also held a meeting with, uh, committee member George Wild to flesh these ideas out in more detail. I had various contacts with other agencies, met with representatives from the State Library of Oregon to discuss ideas on the library project, met with Lane County Economic Development Department members to discuss some of the economic development opportunities. Uh, Lane County Public Works held a bicycle master planning session which I attended. And I also met with a representative from Business Oregon, uh, to discuss funding opportunities for infrastructure and economic development projects. Finally, the Congress approved and the President has signed the American Rescue Plan into law. Uh, that legislation approved, uh, $130 billion in local government funding, uh, much of which is going to come to Oregon. I don't know yet what the guidelines are going to be for us to tap into that, but I will continue to monitor that to make sure we get, um, all the funding that's coming to us. Uh, that's a summary of my activities and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Jeremy?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, I was, I had a couple of people approach me, um, in, in recognizing that the BlackBerry Jam wasn't going to happen, but, um, there was some thought about having a, a, uh, garage sale day. I don't know if that's something people would be interested in, but you know, just one day where every, people had garage sales on the same weekend or something like that. It would bring people out if there were a bunch of them, so that was just another thought. But a couple of people mentioned that to me because they like to do it at BlackBerry Jam, so thought maybe we could, I don't know if that really needs to go through BlackBerry Jam, but, um, just another thing we could do. Okay, that's, that's all on that right now.
To add on to what she said, usually on the, uh, BlackBerry Jam weekend, there are garage sales all over the city and you don't see them so much, uh, uh, at other times, you know, onesie twosies, but, uh, that is a big, uh, weekend for garage sales, so if, uh, uh, I, I think that same weekend, they're looking to do the quilt show, so, uh, I don't know, uh, if that's the weekend they want to do it, you know, I, I, you know.
Well, that would probably be a great idea if there were a couple of things going on. I mean, we just basically put out the date, people could do what they want to do, but maybe keep it the same weekend as BlackBerry Jam would be. Anyway, it was just an idea and, you know, while it would be, bring people out, you'd still have smaller groups. You know, you wouldn't have any big, huge gathering all, all at once, so, just as a thought.
And then everybody's been shot and everything, so we're all healthy again. But the, uh, uh, the garage sales, I know that the, the main reason for that weekend is a high flow of people through there and the, uh, quilt show does, uh, have, uh, quite a few people, uh, uh, attending it, so, uh, whether they want to do it, uh, uh, one day or if there's several, couple of days where we're going to have, uh, events with more than, uh, with a good sized crowd, then I might do that, but, uh, that's, that would be, uh, it, it's, all the garage sales are, are not organized. It just happens to be that everybody does a garage sale on that weekend because they know that a lot of people are there, so. Something for the park committee, they can play with that.
Yeah, that wouldn't be something that had to be organized, really. We just kind of advertise it as a day that, you know, and then, and then maybe put that out in the area and some kind of advertisement for the community. And people can come find the garage sales.
Yeah, they put it on the Facebook page, the website and also the, uh, uh, the, uh, bridge, uh, letter thing. Just let people know that, uh, you know, we're not sponsoring it, but we're, uh, and we're encouraging it or, you know, supporting it. Okay, thank you. Uh, I see public works on here, I don't know that I had, do I have anything in my packet?
There, there's not a public works, uh, report in the packet, but, uh, the public works director is, is, uh, here if, if he has anything to report.
Max, you want to, or did you come back safe and sound and everything and ready to go to work next Monday?
I did, yes, I got my COVID test to get back to the United States, um, so I'm back. I do have a few things, I did not submit a report, as you guys know, I wasn't available to submit a report. Um, did want to give you guys a couple of updates on a few things. Most of you know, there have been, uh, a lot of attempted theft and robberies in the area. Um, it's all over Facebook, it's all over, I mean, anywhere you look, you can see it, so just reminder, make sure you guys are locking up, keep your doors locked up. If you see suspicious activity and please to other people, if they see it, do call, um, the Sheriff's Department, do not call City Hall. Um, you can call City Hall too as well, but we need to call the police, so, no. Um, also today, um, I was informed by the cleaning crew that the, uh, Rollin' Rock Men's restroom was vandalized. Um, I just sent the email to Mr. Cotto, I forgot to send to him earlier. Um, they broke the toilet and ripped the siding off the inside of the bathroom. It capture, um, the only activity through the day on the cameras today, so we will do what's appropriate with those. Um, turn it over to the Sheriff's Department and see what becomes of that. Um, as for the, um, temporary parking lot that's in the middle of Rollin' Rock Park, I'm sure there's been a lot of questions about that, it was kind of out of a loop. That is, I'm sure most of you know, is temporary, that is to relieve some of the parking off of Moss Street in front of Lundie has become a severe traffic hazard and pedestrian crossing hazard. Um, they reached out, the school reached out to, um, the city, also from the CA, a couple of months ago about this project, that is a temporary project until the weather holds up a little bit so they can improve the lot they bought on the corner, which was formerly 13 South Moss. So, their intended purpose is to turn that into staff parking. Um, so this was just a short-term fix to alleviate the traffic on South Moss. Um, I don't know if any of you guys have been there at the start or the end of, um, school, but you cannot get down that road. Is it impassable, um, at, at the current situation? So, not only could people not get through there, but neither could emergency services, so that's why, um, we... What you guys see in the park is in the park, so in case people ask, we've had several calls and about it up at City Hall, so. And if you guys have any other questions, I'll do my best to answer them.
Those, uh, toilets or whatever in the, uh, men's room, they're stainless steel or metal, right?
Say that again?
The, the, uh, uh, toilets or whatever that's in the men's room that was damaged, isn't that stainless steel?
They are not, they are commercial grade, um, ceramic. Um, the ceramic ones, I, I did briefly see today and we're going to get it fixed, obviously, so we can open the restroom back up, but, um, we have solicited a couple quotes to put the, they're not vandalism proof, but they're a lot more durable than the ceramic ones. So, we'll be at Avenue and see what comes of that.
I'd like to say, at some reason, I don't go in there that often, too, right? The reason I was thinking is, uh, metallic, I was going, man, that's, that's a lot, that's a mean people. And the, uh, that, uh, park that they're, uh, parking lot they're putting in the park there, are they going to, uh, cover that with, uh, asphalt or anything or just with gravel?
No, what, what you see is what it's going to be for the short term. We also talked a little bit about, I was at the parks meeting and the BlackBerry Jam meeting, um, possibly using that, there were some ideas about, you know, doing the movies in the park, kind of like, maybe like a drive-in style or some other things, so it kind of be a dual benefit use for us in the short term, but, um, the long term would be, um, you know, when we improve the park, that, that obviously wouldn't remain.
Yeah, well, I, I would say leave it there. Because I think, I, I see, uh, a potential there for either basketball courts or something like that, that, that we already have a foundation and if you dig it up, we're good, if the city wanted to put, uh, basketball courts over there, first thing I'd do is put gravel and, uh, they're going to run it back and forth across that enough that, uh, what we'd have to end up doing is ma- mainly just leveling it and, uh, sealing it and putting some posts up and, uh, look like it, from, just from, uh, the streets, you could almost put two courts there, so, yeah, I, I wouldn't, uh, once they put it down, tell them it's ours, leave it alone.
Yeah. That's something we can definitely discuss later, for sure, but I just want to make sure everybody understand, because I, I know we got a lot of calls. I had a lot of voicemails about it when I did return to the states, so.
Yeah, I believe we...
Definitely got permission first, so.
I believe we talked about Paul Fisher and the basketball courts over there, we was talking like, I don't know, $50,000 last, last month or whatever? And so, uh, uh, if they're going to do, uh, like 75, 80% of the work, because just... Are they going to use it till the end of the year or next year also?
Uh, their, their, their intent is just to use it until the soil, um, the water leaves the soil enough, they can improve that, uh, corner lot, so. Um, I would, I would have guessed, um, it's probably going to be to the end of the school year at least, maybe a little bit of summer for summer recreation. But, uh, myself and the city administrator, we're going to have a conference call with, um, the school and kind of look at the options and the intent and everything about that, so there, there should be more to come on that, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody, anybody else for Max? I'll hear your statement. Thank you, Max, and welcome back. Okay, we got the police report from, uh, Oak Ridge in there. They have a few hours, looks like, so that's good. And there's quite a bit of activity.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead, Bill.
I was just going to ask, Jeremy, maybe we could put this on our, um, work session and just a discussion again, we seem to have an incredible amount of fever. I, I don't know what we can do about it, uh, but it, it might be something we want to revisit and just talk, uh, through. Seems to be pretty brazen and, um, I'm, I'm sensing that as we build in the community and we have more families coming at a little higher income, it's, it's, um, I, I've heard complaints up, um, what would it be? The street that goes up the hill, um, kind of at the end, not right at 4th, but it jogs there. I've heard those folks, no, not Wetlow, I'm talking about over down Highland farther and up the hill. I, I understand those folks are saying that they gladly keep things, they're, they're having stuff stolen all the time. And I know we're, we're stuck, but I just had some thoughts and some questions and, and maybe we are going to have to, you know, look at it again and see if there's anything we can do, because it's, um, it seems to be pretty intense. I mean, unless we, unless it's just a few people and we can manage, you know, somehow they finally get caught, but in the meantime, we're, I think we're, we're struggling in the community. I also understand people have had their, um, gas tanks literally drilled into. And, I mean, that's, that's, it's bad enough to break your gas cap or whatever, it's, but I don't know what that means. That's got to be horrific to have your, your tank drilled. So, just seems like we're, we're struggling, anyway, just thought we, maybe we could add that to our work session and have a discussion.
That sounds good, I think so. Anybody else? Okay. We're up to new business, let me get on my white page here. Okay, motion to approve the modification, conditions approval and review of, uh, Crestview by, owned by McDougal Brothers. Mr. Cotto?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, our planner from the Lane Council of Governments, Henry Hurley is on the line and he has a brief presentation on this item. Uh, I'll say also before I turn it over to him that the modification of condition of approval and the review of conditional approval is what you're actually approving, uh, tonight, if the city council so determines. That is in your agenda packet and then for information, the original, uh, decision that had these conditions of approval is also in your agenda packet. And with that, I'll, uh, turn it over to Henry to...
Thank you, Jeremy. Uh, so I'll give, uh, city council a brief update. Uh, planning commission, at their last meeting, they heard, uh, these two conditions that you're going to hear tonight. Uh, what the applicant is proposing is to, uh, modify a condition of approval number five to install sidewalks at the time of individual lot development. Uh, this is different than what was passed initially, um, which said the sidewalks would be put in at time before final plot approval. Um, so they're requesting to modify that, uh, and planning commission had no issues with it and recommended approval to the city council. Secondly, um, the applicant's engineer and the geotech engineer are on the line tonight, um, and they are here to, um, provide you a brief overview of the geotech report and the findings. Um, if you remember, when you approved the subdivision, we allowed the applicant to condition that report, um, but that report had to come back, uh, for review and approval by city council. So that, those two things are what you're being asked to review and approve tonight. So with that, I'll turn it over to, uh, Branch Engineering, he is the geotech engineer that per, that, uh, wrote the report.
Hi, this is Ron at Branch, um, so we did the, uh, investigation. I don't have the report in front of me this evening, but, uh, we did numerous test pits in the, uh, the right-of-way area, a couple off in the lots, we found no geologic conditions or geotechnical issues that would, uh, preclude development of the site. Some of the clays that were down towards the lower end of the subdivision were removed under the, the street section and, uh, you know, nothing, nothing out of the ordinary from a geotechnical standpoint.
Any questions for him? Okay.
And then, uh, Tony, did you briefly want to just talk about the sidewalks a- and the applicant's plan with that?
Uh, yes, um, my name's Tony Fabro, I'm the civil engineer on the project. And in a normal development, we, we don't put in the sidewalks in front of the homes because they get destroyed during the home construction. And, um, that was a condition of approval and we're, we're asking that that be revised so the homeowners can put in the sidewalks after the driveways put in, after the concrete's poured, the, the buildings put up. And we have a more of a pristine sidewalk versus one that gets beat up during construction. So it's just, it just makes logical sense for us to put the sidewalk in at the time of the building construction. And that's what we're asking for, is a modification of that condition to do that, put in the sidewalk at that time.
Thanks, Tony.
I- is that saying that the homeowner would be responsible for the funding of the sidewalk and the, and the installation of it?
Uh, yeah, or generally the builder, yes, the homeowner would be responsible for it, but, um, a lot of times these homes are built, um, a, a builder takes it on and then, uh, in- installs the sidewalk.
I guess my only concern about that is, is if you're doing these, um, as one-offs as you go, you know, the age of the sidewalks aren't going to match up depending on how the development develops. I mean, if you're, if you have a lot that sits vacant and two on each side of it that you put the sidewalks in and it doesn't get sold, then we end up with a sectioned sidewalk that maybe doesn't match up. I mean, I, that's, I gue- I guess that would be my concern over, over doing these in a patchwork fashion. Um, that, that's the only thing I can think of.
Yeah, and, and, and that might be the case if you get a different mix in concrete, but you also are avoiding chipped and broken and cracked sidewalk from the construction end of it, so structurally, you have a better sidewalk if you pour it later.
I did my, same thing in, uh, the Wetlow subdivision there where they put them in as they went and, uh, they match, they match up nicely, so, go ahead, whoever was going to say something. Okay, I, I've got, uh, anything else there, Henry, or?
N- no, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else? I, I, I see on my paperwork here says modification of conditions, number three, should that be number five?
Sir, that, that's a typographical error on your agenda sheet item, that should say number five instead.
Make sure we look, right things. Sounds good to me, do we have a, we have a motion or do we have any more questions or?
Uh, I have nothing else, um, if you'd like to make a motion to, one, uh, accept the geotech report as presented and then, two, if you want to revise that condition to allow for the sidewalks to be built at the time of individual lot development, uh, you can make a motion now, if you'd like.
Is that what, five and?
Five and twenty-four, one, yeah.
Is that what they, those are, the twenty-one's the geotech and five is the sidewalk? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and, since I've got it in front of me. Want to make a motion to approve modification of condition of approval, number five, and review condition of approval, number twenty-one for land use file 201906 for the Crestview Estate subdivision owned by McDougal Brothers Investments. I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I'll second that.
We have a second? Okay, we have further discussion, questions? Okay, the only comment I have is I drove up through that development and that looks very nice, you know, you guys, uh, you've done a good... A lot of interest in that development. Okay, that's all my comments. All those in favor of motion to approve modification of condition approval number five, review the condition of approval, number twenty-one for land use file 201906 for Crestview Estate subdivision owned by McDougal Brother Investments, signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you all.
Thank you, city council. Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is the purchase of 100 water meters to, uh, Daniel, what we're already doing. Okay, Mr. Cotto, would you like to present this?
This is to approve the purchase of 100 water meters that the public works director, uh, presented and described at your work session. This would be to continue with our regular re- uh, replacement program uh, and obtained a quote from the, uh, vendor that we've been using and have calculated that 100 meters with the total $26,923.
No freight or anything like that, no adder?
I, I think that was in, included, Max, could you speak to that? Are there going to be additional freight charges?
Uh, I do believe there's going to be freight charges, when I initially asked for the quote, I asked them to include that. Um, the quote that I had turned in to this administrator was, he just, um, read, so we'll just make them stick to the quote.
Okay, so.
You, it's about $24 per a hun- per a ten, so it'd be almost $250 if, if it stayed true, but I'm sure this would get shipped on a pallet flat rate, um, it'd be a smaller pallet for 100 meters.
So should we include a caveat for, uh, missed charges related to shipping in this motion so we can capture it just in case they don't or won't go with the quote?
Yeah, you could probably do a, an amount not to exceed, like you guys did last time, Tim, maybe a couple hundred dollars or something. Um, I'm trying to stick to the quote, I, I think that's fair, I asked for a quote and that's what he gave us, so. It's worth a try, he already gave us a $5 meter discount by buying a bulk, but I think it's still worth a try, so.
I'd like, I'd like to make, ma- make a motion to authorize the administrator to make a purchase of not to exceed $27,500 for 100 quantity flow Q2250 water meters from correct equipment and shipping possibly. I'll second it.
Take the charge.
It's yours, Max.
We have a motion and a second, okay? Motion to authorize city administrator to make the purchase of 100 water meters for $27,500 uh, water meters, uh, for correction from correction equipment. Do we have any questions, comments or thoughts about this? They have them at stock now, they're, they can ship like in a short period of time, right? Okay, good. Three to six months, it's not as much fun, okay? Okay, all those favor or motion to authorize the administrator to make a purchase of, uh, $27,500 for 100, uh, flow IQ... Flow IQ twenty two fifty water meters. From from correct equipment, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Next is. Looking at authorizing the. Solicit request for proposals for architectural services for the Maggie Osgood Library renovation project.
In included in your agenda packet is a draft request for proposals for architectural services for the Maggie Osgood Library renovation. I'm asking for tonight is your feedback and if you so decide, your approval. To authorize me to put this out there to qualified architectural firms to solicit competitive proposals. Which I would bring back to you with the goal of having a contract in place in May. Over the summer, we would work with the selected architects to finalize design specifications. And construction documents. To bid this project out, ultimately with the goal of completing construction by the first or second quarter of twenty twenty two. The agency from which we're pursuing grants for this project. Has requested that we solicit competitive bids so that we have a true number of what the project cost is going to look like. The this project, the entire renovation project is included in the budget. We know that we're not going to get that done through the end of this budget year. But the amounts for the professional services for design, those are included in the budget as well. So I'll be happy to to take any questions or feedback that you have on this item. Mr. Stratus has his hands up.
Go ahead, Dan.
Um, did we ever get a chance to reach out to Jehovah's Witness organization to try to get any drawings that they had to pass on to our architects to try to save some money?
No, sir, I haven't contacted the Jehovah's Witness, my priority was to finish drafting this up. And while it's out there waiting on and we're waiting on responses, that's the next item that I was hoping to pivot to.
They generally build from a pretty standard template, so I imagine that they can present something I would think fairly easily to. To us. Any other question? I didn't say you had the facility plan in there, that's too early to send that over or. They're just, we're just looking for people that'd be interested in the project itself, correct?
So say that again.
The the facility plan were all the layout of the windows and all that other, that's, that didn't go in this package, right?
That is referenced in here.
Okay, so they can go to it.
So they they can go to it and familiarize themselves with the project.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, I just didn't see it, I saw pictures of the building, but not the details.
The the, that study is posted on the city website and the link is provided in this.
Fantastic, that that way they know what they're getting into.
Yes.
And I understand you do have some interest in people wanting to actually. Do this job.
That is correct, I've I've had a informational discussion with a firm that was referred to us. By our engineer, the city engineer, and I've compiled a list of. Probably about two dozen architectural firms between here and. Salem that have listed experience in civic buildings and libraries.
Okay.
And I'll also post this in the the newspaper so that we can make sure anybody who might be interested will be up to see it.
All right. Does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize the city administrator to solicit requests for proposals for architectural services for the Maggie Osgood Library renovation project.
I'll second that.
The second, to authorize the city administrator solicit request for proposal for architectural services for the Maggie Osgood Life. Library renovation project. Further questions, comments, desires? Not seeing, not hearing any? Okay, all those pay for motion to authorize city administrator to solicit request for proposals. For architectural services for the Maggie Osgood Library renovation project, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Close? Any other business, anybody? Have the feeling for? Not hearing any? I got some mayor comments, you guys are lucky to know. I, one of the. Organizations that I attend meetings with is part of ODOT or Lane Act. And they've been working on and. Coming up. With the their equity program for diversity inclusion. And they're busy developing directives, standards, goals and quotas. And. There's a couple items here, usually whenever. People change faces in Washington, you don't see immediate. Changes, needs, programs coming down, but evidently these were already in the works and headed down, so. That's that's going on, so whenever doing highway projects, they will be taking those items into consideration. One of my meetings I was at, the city Eugene city councillor. Said that residents are becoming polarized regarding the homeless situation. Another one, also this was transportation, they had to do with greenhouse. House gas emissions. They they. Measured the greenhouse gas inventory for Lane County. And they found there's two point eight metric tons of CO two being produced by transportation. And one metric ton being produced, CO two being produced by buildings. And said fossil fuels, which is gas, diesel, natural gas. Is making three point seven metric tons a year. Another is having to do with climate. The highways are gonna have more charging stations. Along the highways for electric cars. And they call it the electric highway, so anyway, that's the future. What I'm hearing out there, so anyway, just. Kind of let you know on that one, any other comments by anybody? Public, public, okay, public's quiet, okay, so not hearing anything else, does anybody else have? Okay, you have one more thing, I know Gail brought up the. That item about. We'll do that, if anybody thinks of anything else. Get in touch with Mr. Carter, Mr. Carter, you have something else to say?
Councillor Stratus had his hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You know, we're already in the third month of the year, that's almost twenty five percent of the year gone. I'd like to keep some momentum going on the community decoration for various. Holidays and things, work with whoever we need to work with. To to keep progress going on this, it'd be really easy to just kind of let it sit and then feel pressure again as we get. Towards the end of the year and I'd like to make sure we at least make some slow momentum on this. Whatever that looks like, whether we get, you know, a few minutes to discuss it on the work group or. We can get some feedback from some of the other committees, let's, the Parks and Rec Committee, whatever, let's, let's keep. Working on this and not let it, you know, kind of fall by the wayside.
Good idea. Anything else? Sam, how's life in Nevada?
Well, you heard, it's crazy. I have a a grand, a brand new granddaughter, Aurora was born on Friday and her big brother Sawyer is. Loud and noisy and excited.
Congratulations. Congratulations to them.
Thank you. Yep, she's a, she's healing from her surgery, so, yeah. Yeah, crazy.
I thought so with her. Okay. Not hearing anything else, we're adjourned at seven forty four. Good night, everyone.
Thank you, good night.
Take care.
Good night, bye.